And you're on Jane.
Thank you. Good evening. You'll notice my video is off, but that's because even though we've tried to problem solve my connectivity issues, it's not always as stable. So I'll mostly keep my video off this evening. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session. We are reconvening in open session now. Per former Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting, but members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical to. The option for public bodies to hold meetings remotely until March 31st, 2025, has been signed into law by Governor Healy as Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. Any members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link to be found on the GM RSD website. It's under School Committee Notice as an agenda for upcoming meetings and it will have tonight's school committee. We are live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the district website. If you are in the Zoom audience as an audience member, please keep your camera and microphone off. At this point in our meeting, we will now hold the public hearing for fiscal year 25 for the preliminary budget presentation and the line item details. And this is also available to anyone if they go on the agenda and click on the link. Heidi, we're going to have public participation right after this, if that's something that you're looking for.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Just because the public hearing has to be published in the newspaper and all, so we need to make sure and do that first, but thank you for understanding.
Yeah, I saw that on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Joanne, I believe this, you will start us on this.
Okay, so I can share my screen. I don't, I wasn't going to go through the entire budget just because we've been through it a couple of times. Nothing has changed, but we could look at the total overall budget here, so.
And right, and I just let people know that the entire budget itself with all the information is available online if they just hit the link in the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So, our overall budget ended up being a 0.7% increase. So, part of that was, we did not get the additional state aid that we were anticipating. And the S or grants are done at the end of this year or at the end of September. We had anticipated, we had thought that we were going to get more Chapter 70, but the way that turned out, it was not the case. And so, we had to cut back the budget by about $500,000 to balance it. So, our overall budget here, as you can see, is a 0.7% increase. The general fund budget is 20, just over 24 million, but the overall budget for all funds is 27,667,378. This budget continues all programming that we have had that we have in the district. It doesn't end any of our programming. So, I don't know how much more we need to say. There's not too many people in the audience.
This isn't time for questions since it's a public hearing. If anyone in the audience has a question, we would welcome them to let us know.
Go ahead Wendy.
Yeah, I just am curious as to whether or not there has been at this point on pets to staff.
No, we haven't made any decisions with regard to potential reductions to staff. We are gonna, we're still in that same holding pattern that we were when we met in person. Even though we've met with the town, there is a possibility of, I don't know what the possibility is, but there may be an opportunity to close a bit more of the gap without having to make any reductions in positions. And if we do make reductions in positions, we're gonna seek to target largely unfilled positions in hopes that we're not going to lose any person. And so, we still want some time to be able to work with the administrative team and also to wait for any, any potential gap filling revenues that might emerge for us.
Bill? Sure.
Yeah, I think that deserves the question of unfilled positions. You deem that most of those are not necessary at this time? Or you can work around not having them with your present personnel?
Yes, we would, we would have to. I mean, we've worked our way through the year largely without filling some of those positions. But, you know, we also can't always guarantee, you know, that there, there could be an, if, an opportunity with, if there's a retirement and relatively low numbers. So, there's still a lot to look at. And while we have ideas, we don't want to, we don't want to proactively or preemptively reduce something if we find out that we don't have to reduce it.
Thank you. So again, I just would like to remind people this is a preliminary budget. The final budget doesn't get voted at this time. It will be voted in March.
And this is also an opportunity for the public to speak on the budget. So if anybody would like to speak, you can raise your hand so Jane can call on you.
Yes, and if I don't see your hand, please just speak up.
Jane, in the absence of anyone else speaking at this time, I would like to bring one thing forward based on the reporting of the meeting you had with the select boards and the finance committees of the towns of Gill and Montague. The article, one of the articles started out with Montague's commitment to 48 and a half percent of their levy to the schools, which then sets the stage for what is Gill's assessment going to be. And in this case, it turns out not that, and those 48% is relative to Montague alone. It doesn't mean that Gill is going to be paying 52%. I don't intend that. But, but it happens in this article that it starts out talking percentage and then says, but Gill will be much less. And then it lists the numbers of, of each one and Gill is much less. But in fact, I just want to bring forward that the share of the Gil-Montague assessment for the town of Gill relative to their levy is 52%. So every time, that's the kind of impact that can happen with a larger town and a small town. We have a much smaller budget, so fluctuations in the assessment from the district definitely impact Gill a lot more than they do Montague, given that Montague is pre-committed to an amount that they're going to provide. And then Gill has to follow suit. I'm not objecting to that necessarily, but I think it needs to be stated that percentages are percentages and dollars don't necessarily represent those. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate that. If there's no one else in the public who would like to weigh in either with a comment or a question, then we will end the public hearing for the budget.
Hi, my name is Nora. I'd like to make a comment.
About the budget?
Yeah, I believe it is a request about the budget.
Okay, because I do have you listed for public participation, which follows.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Keep me posted on that.
Okay, it'll, it'll be right after this. Ramona?
Hi there. I couldn't find the little hand raise button. I made it a little bit, I missed the very beginning of the meeting, but I just wanted to kind of make a comment and remind the school committee and the district how important all of our staff members are. And I know there's been some talk in the, it's the last school committee meeting and in the Montague Reporter about unfilled positions and kind of getting through the school year. And yes, we have made it past 100 days of the school year and that's great. But I wouldn't say that we are functioning at the way we should be functioning to support our students. And I think it's really important to acknowledge that, yes, we are understaffed. Yes, we are making it through, but no, we are not making it through the way we need to for our students. And I think it's just really important to keep that in mind, that there's a reason why we are searching for so many positions, most of which are Unit C, which need to support.
Yes, I understand, but that, this is much more appropriate for public participation. I appreciate it, but we're just looking at the numbers at the moment and we're going to follow with public participation. And I have two people that have signed up for that and we won't miss it. Promise.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else about the budget presentation before we continue with public participation? Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Joanne, for the explanation. And please remember, I'll just repeat it, anyone who'd like to see all the line item details of the budget are welcome to go to the agenda, click on the link and they can see all of the information that they would like to see. Okay, moving on, we'll have, we welcome our visitors and it's an opportunity for public participation. Policy BEDH has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely. And we, as we've mentioned before, this is a time for people to give us their opinions. We don't interact with or have a discussion. That's not what it's designed for. And we have two people who signed up for this. First, I have Nora and then I have Heidi. So Nora?
Hello, my name is Nora. Thank you, Jane. Yes, I would like to start my video. Great. Hi. How's my audio? Can you hear me all right?
It's great.
Okay, wonderful. So, I know we have a packed agenda tonight, so I'm going to keep my comments brief, but I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Nora Zarzaki and I am the math teacher and the team leader of the sixth grade at Gray Falls Middle School. I really appreciate the opportunity to publicly comment here tonight. And I also want to thank everybody who came to the meeting. I work with some of you every day and I know some of you by name and I have some of your children as well or have taught some of your children. So it's really nice to see you tonight. I'm, I'm here tonight to advocate on behalf of our youngest students at Gray Falls Middle School. For these students, they're 11 and their families come to us very excited for their middle school experience and, and they, they have their first impressions of middle school created by the environment that we, we set for them and the expectations that we set for them. They're learning how to use a locker for the first time, how to switch classes for different subjects with different teachers for the first time. And they're of course navigating increasingly complex social situations as they enter into being teenagers. So, we're, we're talking about the budget tonight and I realize we're not voting on it for final until March, but I, I just want to put a topic out on the table for discussion. So, seventh and eighth grade both have four content teachers in addition to a special educator and a paraprofessional. And sixth grade has three core content teachers and a special educator and a paraprofessional. And I just want to provide you some of my perspective on, on how this affects our, our youngest students. It, it means that there's one less adult available in the hallways to stand and to monitor social interactions. It means that there's one less adult available to provide guidance and there's one less adult to contact families, emailing, phone calls, developing those relationships and cultivating school home communication that they deserve and they need a lot of as they enter middle school. There's one less core content teacher for the subject of geography. And we, we've worked so hard as a sixth grade team to overcome that, that difference. But there's really no replacing an additional adult. So, I, I know that we're all aware that in this current post pandemic K through 12 era of education, our, our special needs are increasing and the enormous behavioral and mental health and emotional challenges that we face every day, they're critical factors. And I'm, I'm asking for the school committee and for the community to consider having our sixth grade supported by having the same number of adults in our hallways and in our classrooms as the seventh and eighth grade have. I'm sorry, the audio is a little bit spotty for me. Is it spotty for anybody else?
Yes, it's a, Jane, it's not easy to, you, you're breaking up again? Even with the picture off?
Okay, even with my video off. We tried to correct it, but it hasn't corrected. I'm sorry to say. Bill may have, you know, enter in at some points, but I was remiss, Nora, and just making people that we tried to. It's better.
Yeah, it was for a little bit. It's just not consistent.
Is Brian or isn't better?
It was better for a little while.
Okay, we tried, okay, I have a comment for three minutes each. And I should mention that was my error.
Okay. And there's a second.
Thank you. We do appreciate you.
Yeah, was Nora done?
I think Nora's next.
Okay.
And I think we've already.
So Bill, Heidi, I think was the second person?
Yes.
I should go ahead.
Okay, I'll be fast. I just wanted to make an announcement that Unit C voted to ratify the settlement agreement that we made. So, yeah, the bargaining, the negotiations team came to a tentative agreement on January 18th at like 8:30 at night. And we had been in session since what, 5:15? But we got it done and then we got things together, brought it to the membership in a meeting at Sheffield on Thursday. And the votes to ratify were roughly 98, 99%. So, we are really happy that we have come to the end of our negotiations and clearly it was a positive outcome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Am I any better?
For now.
No, probably not. Okay, Tina's trying to control it to make it work better.
Is this an appropriate time to request that we move?
Try this.
Okay.
Yes, yes, please.
So I wanted to request that the committee move up the vote, vote to move up the vote for the Unit C settlement agreement because Matt Lord has another meeting to attend and has, as the municipal official assigned to the negotiating team, he does also get to vote with the school committee and I'd like him to be able to participate in that.
I'll make a motion.
So Bill moved?
Yep.
I'm sorry, before we leave public comment. I know, I, I just wanted to bring up that Ramona had wanted to make comment earlier and she was, I, I think the direction was to wait until public comment. Did, are we going to return to Ramona's comment?
I'm. I neglect, I didn't have on the list ahead of time of people that were requested, but we can after this.
Jane, maybe, how do you do? I'm sorry. How do you do with your phone?
Jane, I'm gonna, I'm going to, I'm going to let you, I'm going to make you leave the meeting and go back in.
Okay. Me and Bill could probably have take a roll call vote to move the vote up.
Bill, Bill, you, you made a motion, but we need to, before you could do a roll call to move the vote for the Unit C settlement agreement up on the agenda. So Laurie Lee? Thank you.
Yes.
Did she move it?
Yes, she seconded, Laurie Lee seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, my motion.
Yep.
And we need a roll call vote?
Yes.
So I'll start with Laura Lee Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. Christina Markalow?
Yes.
Heather Katsoulis?
Yes.
Wendy Thompson?
Yes.
Is Clifford still with us?
No, no, he's in the dead zone. So we actually, we have to. We have to wait for Jane to get back in before we could move it because we need the quorum. Hang in there, Matt.
One, two, three. We have a quorum. We have five.
Oh, you're right. No, you're right. I'm sorry. It's because Laurie Lee's picture is off.
So it passes.
Tina, I, someone's on, Tina, you're, I think you're, you're not muted. So Bill, that passes if.
Yes.
So the.
I think we might need Jane.
We're looking to pass the agreement between Unit C and the Gil-Monica Regional School District.
And the, the language says, the units, discussion about the Unit C settlement agreement and authorization to allow the chair to sign the collective bargaining agreement vote. So it's requesting that the committee, like we do with the Unit A contract, authorize the chair to sign the collective bargaining agreement with Unit C.
For the district. Yep.
So we need a motion? And a second?
We'll move it.
Heather moves it?
Laurie Lee will second it.
Thank you, Laurie Lee. Any further discussion on this? If not, we'll have another roll call vote. I'll start with Laurie Lee again, please.
Yes.
And Heather Katsoulis?
Yes.
Christina Markalow?
Yes.
Wendy Thompson?
Oh, we missed you. You muted too quickly, Wendy.
I heard her. Matt, I believe, I believe you have a vote on this. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's, that's my understanding.
And you say yes?
Yes.
And myself, and I have a feeling I missed somebody.
Christina and Jane. Jane's back.
Jane?
Christina, you already went. I'm sorry.
I'll try again. Yes.
I heard you. And myself, yes, Bill, Bill. And Jane, you're back on, so it's back in your lap.
Yeah, we can only hope Bill be ready. So everyone got voted, so we approved the unit C. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Matt. And Matt, Heather, and John, and Jane, and also to Joanne as well as the Unit C bargaining team for all of their effort in making this work.
You're welcome. Good to work with you guys. Have a great night.
You too, Matt. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much, Matt. Yes. And if you can, I'm going to try this. I'm sorry, I neglected to come back to Ramona at, at public participation. I was having difficulties with everything connected to the computer. So if Ramona is still here, I apologize and we will go back to public participation and we'd be very happy for you to speak.
Um, thank you so much, Jane, and thank you so much. Ramona had not previously requested to, to speak at public participation and I didn't realize there was going to be one for budget. And I appreciate you hearing me out as always. And I think I just wanted to go back to the point in the budget that Brian had commented.
that Brian had commented on of, you know, open positions currently this year and filling positions this year and next year. And I think it's just always good to be aware that we are still incredibly short-staffed. I work at Gil, Hillcrest and Sheffield and across the schools, we are short-staffed. And there is a lot of other Unit A members and Unit C members trying their best to support each other whenever we can and as best we can, but even though we've made it past one hundred days of school, it has not been easy. And the people that are struggling the most and are suffering the most are students. When they don't have the support there that they need, they are struggling. It's not okay for us to continue to work in the situation that we are in for those students. And I'm thinking specifically about some of our Unit C openings, specifically in our elementary schools. Many of those Unit C openings are really focused on and surrounded around student IEPs. And it is concerning to see so many openings still, and I'm concerned about our students making progress. And, you know, getting what they deserve and what they are legally. So I think I just wanted to kind of bring that up because I know that that had brought, been brought up in the budget and thinking about those, those openings. So thank you so much again, Christina and Jane, for coming back to me. I really appreciate you taking the time to hear me out. Thank you.
Well, and thank you again for your patience. We appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, am I still audible?
Yes, so far so good.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Bill. We'll just keep on problem solving with technology for next time. Important events, Brian.
So tomorrow is an early release day for professional development. Thursday is the Franklin County Bands Day, which was originally going to be held at Greenfield High School, but now has been switched over to our school. And so Alyssa Camo and Principal Barnes and the rest of the staff at Turner's Falls High School and Great Falls Middle School will be hosting Franklin County Bands Day at Turner's Falls High School on Thursday, February 15th. There's no school from February 19th to February 23rd for the vacation. There'll be early release days for parent-teacher conferences, Thursday and Friday, March 14th and 15th. And then an early release day for professional development on Wednesday, March 20th. Then I know something that many folks are looking forward to. It has been successful in the past, and we've had a great turnout, is the Elementary Mathematics Night will be held on Thursday, March 21st at 5:30 at Sheffield Elementary School. And then in our next meeting, in our next meeting, I'll have the dates for the spring theater performances and add the, the times in with the dates for the committee and for the public and post those in our newsletter. We've had great turnout at the performances in the fall, and hopefully we'll be able to fill the auditorium again.
Thank you, Brian. Any committee member have any other events that they attended they'd like to report on? Okay, thank you. Student representative report, I don't, is Tina joining us this evening?
No, I spoke with Tina during the day and shared that we should probably do a student report on February 27th rather than tonight.
Oh, okay, thank you. In that case, Brian, your superintendent's report is next.
So a very brief report for this meeting. I wanted to say congratulations to the Turner's Falls High School Earl McGraw Uplift Award recipients. Congratulations to Turner's Falls High School Senior Grayson Bous and Social Studies Teacher David Smith, who were selected as this year's recipients of the Earl McGraw Uplift Award. The nominations for and selections of the recipients are based on the following criteria. Treats everyone with respect and without judgment. See someone who is down and tries to lift them up with love and laughter. Goes after their own goals with all of their heart and helps others go after their goals. Exemplifies the spirit of Mr. McGraw. Congratulations, congratulations to both Grayson Bous and David Smith for being recipients of this prestigious honor.
Yes, thank you.
I also have a request of the committee to accept another donation to the Helping Hands Athletic Leadership Council. This one was pulled in with some networking on the part of Turner's Falls High School Senior Owen LaValley, who is also decorated Eagle Scout, who helped coordinate a generous donation of $1,000 to the Helping Hands Athletic Leadership Council from Norm Imond. Thank you to Owen and to Mr. Imond. Again, these funds are used to support families in need in our community, and I'm requesting that the school committee vote to accept this donation on behalf of the council. And then adding on MASC's charting the course. I know this isn't in Western Mass per se, but we do still have the event that's scheduled in Chicopee on Saturday, March 9th. I know Cliff's Bachelor is already registered. The next closest offering geographically is on Saturday, May 18th, and it's in Gardner. There are full-day seminars that are on Saturdays. If any member wishes to attend, please let Tara and I know as soon as possible so that we can get you registered. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And we will take that vote in the business part of the meeting. Moving on to the next item, we have the Business and Operations Report by Joanne Blyer.
Okay. I'm going to start with the operating statement, so there's a link to the operating statement in your packet. So the operating statement tells us how our current year is looking. So on fiscal '24 through January 31st, this report is, is what this report covers. So when we build the budget, you know, so right now, we're building the budget for fiscal '25. That budget doesn't even begin until July 1st, and then, you know, it goes through the fiscal year. And so we make some estimates on some things, and those estimates, it could be our revenues change, or some of our expenses change, or our staffing changes. And so this operating statement sort of summarizes all of that. So on the expense side, our largest surplus this year comes from our school choice out and charter out enrollment in the significant decline that we've seen. So I do expect our year to end with a surplus primarily due to those changes in enrollments, those declines. The benefits and insurance line includes our negotiable increases. And so now that both the Unit A and the Unit C contracts have been settled, we are going to be adjusting those budgets and moving them into the salary lines. So you'll see a transfer coming up in the agenda to transfer the Unit A and the non-union positions. And in the coming weeks, you'll get another transfer to approve to move the settlements for the Unit C. We are estimating our operations line will be overspent primarily due to utility cost increases and some other unanticipated needs throughout the district. On the revenue side, we've seen some changes in our Irving enrollment this year. Some pretty significant changes that we hadn't seen in recent years. And so we will have about $135,000 deficit in that line. Our charter enrollment, while it impacts our expense side on the charter tuition, it also impacts our charter reimbursement on the revenue side. So we're going to expect to see about an $88,000 deficit in that line. And then the deficit that you see on the operating statement of $300,000, the Chapter 71 transportation reimbursement is not actually a deficit. That is moving $300,000 to the Transportation Revolving Fund at the very bottom of the page, and that's to use to support next year's budget. So we will have a vote at a later time this year to actually transfer those funds. And the last line that I wanted to talk about on the revenue side is the interest income. So the interest continues to increase with our change in banks. In addition, we have set some funds aside in a 90-day CD that's also earning a higher interest rate. So the overall picture of our operating statement shows that our revenues have a deficit of about $350,000. But our expense side has a surplus, and so what we expect at the end of the year is our general fund to wash out at about a $500,000 surplus, and those funds would roll into E and D next, be used in future years. So if you remember, we're using $500,000 in fiscal '25's budget from E and D to support the budget. So this number is a good number that that's going to roll in there and offset that. And looking at the revolving funds on that same sheet, our SR3 line is there, and you can see that we're spending that down to the $210,000, and that is the amount of money that will roll into next year to be used for the summer program. The cafeteria revolving fund, we have been getting higher rates for each meal served. And that has helped to build up the revolving fund for the cafeteria, which will enable us to replace equipment as needed. Some of our schools are getting older and the equipment is also getting older. And then the athletic revolving fund, you can see that that balance has come down. So we no longer charge users fees for students to participate in sports. The only revenues that come into the athletic revolving account would be from gate receipts at our events. So the balance that has been in that revolving fund is from prior years when we did collect gate receipts and users fees both going into there. So this year, we had three pretty significant projects that we used some of that funding for. One of them was the pool repair. Another was the installation of volleyball pools in the gym, and the third one was the stone monument for the softball field. Does anyone have any questions about the operating statement? Also included in your packet is the expenditure report, and that shows the line item expenses. Okay. We're on any questions? I'll move on to the next section here. So we do have some budget transfers. Jane, do you want me to do the budget transfers here, or do you want to wait until the?
They're under the business section, so if that's okay with you when we get to that item, I'll ask you to read the exact wording that you need us to vote.
Okay, then that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to school committee reports. We need to, we need to vote the warrant subcommittee approval. Can people hear me okay now? Okay, just let me know if not, because I'm, I'm, can't tell, I sound fine to me, but we have four warrants, and if it's okay, we'll vote them as a group. They're all FY '24. The first is Gil Elementary Student Activity Warrant, number 3445. They're all dated 2/14/2024. This one is in the amount of $836. The next is the High School Student Activity Warrant, number 3446, in the amount of $8,716.35 and 35 cents. The next is ACH Warrant, number 3447, in the amount of $16,072.41. And the last is the larger accounts payable, which is 3448, in the amount of $221,769.10. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move it.
Heather, thank you.
I'll second it, Bill.
And Bill seconded, thank you. And we'll take a roll call vote to approve those unless there's any discussion. If you're interested in specifics, all that information is in your packet. Okay, roll call to approve, Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy? Okay, got it. Yep, Laura Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, Cliff?
Yes.
Thank you and myself, thank you. Moving on to the business section, we've already completed Item A. We moved it up and voted the settlement agreement for Unit C. The next item is to approve a student council field trip to the state conference that will require a vote. And we do have the, all the paperwork in our packet, and I'm not sure if Beth Forten is joining us or not. Do you know, Brian?
No, she's not. I told you, I had given, I had given the committee some information at a prior meeting, and she was just waiting to get all of the final information from MSAA, the organization that was organizing the conference. And so there are eight total students signed up, and as I had mentioned, they're using the district van. They are all on the same campus, and there is a nurse available 24/7 for the entire time that the students are at the conference. And so I'm requesting on Beth's behalf that the school committee approves this field trip for members of the student council to attend the state conference. It's a great leadership event, and students come back changed and ready to do things in their community and better leaders as a result of their interactions with their peers from across the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Brian. I will entertain a motion in a second, and then if there's any discussion, we'll have a discussion. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Yes, I'll move it, Bill.
Bill?
I'll second it, Laura Lee.
And a second, Laura Lee, thank you. And the discussion about it, all the documents necessary are in your packet, but if you have any questions, you're welcome. Okay, seeing none, then we'll take a roll call vote to approve it. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Laura Lee?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. The next item is, we need to take a vote to authorize entry into a memorandum of understanding for ESSA transportation reimbursement claiming, and Joanne will explain this to us. It is a multi-multi-page document.
So we have an opportunity to collect reimbursement for our foster care transportation. So right now, we get reimbursement for our regular red transportation, because we're a regional school district, so anyone that's more than a mile and a half. We get reimbursement for our homeless transportation at a much lower rate. But this is another another reimbursement for foster care transportation. In order to claim this, we need to have a memorandum of understanding, which came from the state, and they said you need to authorize it so that way we can sign off on it. And then we send it off to them, and they take care of the other signatures that they need. So they'll get another signature from the Executive Office of Health and Human Services. They'll sign off on it as Department of Education, and they'll get another signature from the Department of Children and Families. And so if we have this agreement, then we're able to collect our reimbursement. So for us, for this year, it's about $7,500. So you know, it's of course worth doing. And so we just need authorization to enter into this memorandum of understanding.
Thank you. I will take a motion in a second, and then if anyone has any questions or comment.
I'll move it.
Okay, Wendy, thank you.
I'll second.
And Heather, second, any discussion? Okay, in that case, we'll have a roll call vote to approve that. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Laurie Lee?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Um, Item D under business is to approve the budget transfers that will also need to vote that Joanne mentioned. And Joanne, if you'd like to read each transfer, then we will vote on it afterwards.
Okay, let me. Oops. Just have to get to my report here. Okay, so the first transfer moves $271,000, $271,463 from the negotiable increases line, and it adjusts Unit A staff salary lines as necessary for employment changes and salary increases.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to make that transfer.
I'll move.
Heather, thank you.
Second.
Second. Did I hear Wendy?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion of that? Okay, we'll take a roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Laurie Lee?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Thank you, and myself, and transfer number two, Joanne.
Okay, hold on one second here. Back to my report. Oops. Hmm. Hey, not sure why I'm having so much trouble getting to my report here. Okay, transfer number two moves $58,457,000 from the negotiable increases line to various non-union salary lines as adjusted for employment changes and salary increases.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Summer?
Heather, thank you.
I'll second it.
I think Laurie, I think Laurie Lee got in there. Thank you. Any discussion?
Can I request something?
Sure, discussion, yeah.
Would, uh,
Yes.
Joanna, would you rephrase the amount that you said? Because you ended it saying thousands, and it sounded like too much.
That would be a very big number. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, $58,457.
Thank you.
Okay, the corrected amount. Thank you, Bill. I appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second for the amount to be approved, and any other discussion?
Yes, I had a question.
Sure.
Uh, so these increases are, they're, uh, what, how do I want to say? Uh, per the salaries agreements that are already in place. For example, uh, principal salaries, I think they're, you know, a lot of them are, uh, but some of them are three-year salaries, some of them are, you know, the increase as per the contract is what I'm trying to say.
Yes, yes. So when we build the budget, we don't know what the increases are going to be. So we put increases, you know, estimates in that line. And then after the year gets started and their salary is set for the year, then we transfer the funds. So we just haven't done that yet. So this is just hovering the deficits that you see in some of those lines.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Laurie Lee?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Item E, we need to vote to accept the donation to the Helping Hands Athletic Leadership Council. And Brian, would you like to phrase that for us from your report? So we get the correct phrasing?
I'd like the school committee to accept a donation from Norm Emond of $1,000 um, on behalf of the Helping Hands Athletic Leadership Council.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to that effect. Heather?
Yeah.
And did I hear a second?
Yep. You did, from Bill.
Was it you, Bill?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion of that? I think thank you is the operative word for that one, very much. We appreciate any donations to that great fund. Okay, we'll take a roll call to approve. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Laurie Lee?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Um, Item F, we need to authorize memorandums of agreement regarding leave time, and we'll need to vote on that. Um, Brian will give us that information.
So, um, in this particular case, to protect the privacy of the individuals who are dealing with a medical situation, serious medical circumstance for a family member, that, um, I'm requesting that the school committee authorize uh, a memo, two memorandums of agreement, one for a Unit A staff member and one for a Unit C staff member, to enable them to access their personal sick leave to care for an immediate family member. Uh, and to be able to access any of the sick leave that they need in order to fulfill that care obligation. Again, not, I'm limiting the amount of information that I'm sharing with the committee, because this isn't a public meeting, and I just want to be able to protect the privacy of the Unit A and Unit C member.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion in a second and then open it for discussion.
I'll move that.
Wendy, thank you.
I'll second.
And Heather, second. Any discussion on that item? In that case, we'll take a roll call vote to approve. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Laurie Lee?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Item G, we have a new policy, EDF. This is simply the first reading. It concerns school nutrition program charge policy. And Brian can probably give us the short version of what this new policy is.
And so basically, I wanted to get this on as a first reading as Molly Brooks returned to the district from her leave. She's picking up a number of compliance-related reports with the United States Department of Agriculture, as well as other federal and state-related programs. And many of these programs have various checklists that, uh, to ensure that school districts have various policies and so forth related to access. You may remember that, um, the Commonwealth has decided that free, all school lunches will be free. And so students don't pay for a lunch or a breakfast until they'd be getting seconds. Um, as a result of that, uh, in fact, we do not have an existing policy for, um, balances that would still exist on a student. But we need to have a policy in order for, um, Molly to be able to check that off and also to be able to provide clarity for families. So rather than, I know policy subcommittee was coming up soon, but I wanted to get this on um, so that Molly can at least be able to say when she enters into her reports that it's, it's either in progress with the school committee or she has a clear idea and can put a date when she would expect that it would be approved. And so again, this is just a first reading. We'll keep it on the agenda for the next two meetings.
Any questions or comments at the time? We won't be voting, as Brian said, until the third reading. So questions can still be brought up at other meetings as well. Okay, thank you.
You could, you could also add that, um, we're having a policy subcommittee meeting to further consider it.
Right, and we certainly will. But I was mistaken in the date we picked, because it's a federal holiday, so the building won't be open. So I'll need to check with you, Heather, and you, Bill, and we'll need to pick a different date.
Right.
Because I neglected to notice that. But we will be meeting probably next week.
I just wanted to emphasize that we, to some degree, we are engaged. That's all.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because we have been going through the policies. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on, we are at H to appoint an open Montague School Committee seat. We will need to vote this, and Brian has a little more information on that since he receives the letter.
So when, um, you may remember at our previous meeting, we had a point voted to appoint Carol Jacobs. Shortly after the meeting, Carol, who is a retired superintendent, well, her superintendency was in the eastern part of the state, and she had two residences, one in Montague and one in Newburyport. And at the time, she realized she was voted, uh, registered to vote in Newburyport. And therefore, her appointment is there, is therefore nullified um, as a result of the fact that she was not a registered voter. She is, however, registered to vote now in Montague and has, again, submitted another letter of interest. So we're back at the point of, um, asking the school committee to consider her appointment to the school committee as she is willing to serve.
Yes, we appreciate very much that she was able to do that and is still interested in joining us. And we all have her letter of interest in the packet this evening. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Carol Jacobs to the vacant Montague School Committee seat.
I'll move.
Heather, thank you.
Second.
Wendy, second, any discussion? Again, I think just thank you pretty much says it. So we'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Laurie Lee?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
And myself, yes, and thank you. We will, Brian and I will hold an orientation with Carol at her earliest convenience, and then we will have our slots filled. That'll be great. Last item under business is a discussion about in-person versus remote school committee meetings. We have been posting them in both manners so that we can do whatever is necessary to keep meeting. This meeting in particular is, um, has specific dates in the policy and in law. So, um, we knew that if there was a problem with the weather, which was a possibility earlier on, that we would not be able to hold it in time. So, uh, we were able to, as I've said, Tina and I are still working on the issue that's with my connectivity. We'll keep working on that. We certainly will attempt to meet in person whenever possible. We'll, uh, continue to post meetings, um, in both manners so that if, when it gets closer to the meeting date, there's a reason. If there's more illness, there is a lot of illness around in the area now, or weather issues or anything, that we can stay remote and still continue to do the business of the district. So I appreciate everybody understanding that. That's our goal, and that's how we're doing it. Thank you. Okay, the next item, we have some minutes to approve. The minutes from December 19th, 2023 are included in your packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll move.
Heather, thank you.
I'll second it, Bill.
Bill, thank you. Any discussion of the minutes? Thank you, Tara, for those. Did I hear a comment, your question?
Oh, that, I came off on mute by accident.
Oh, that's okay, perfectly understandable. Um, so we'll take a roll call vote to approve, um, the minutes. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Yes, I, I saw you and heard you. Good, Laurie Lee?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We will, uh, Bill, Brian, and I will be having agenda planning, um, approximate. Usually, it's the Wednesday before the next meeting to put our agenda together. The dates of our next scheduled meetings are February 27th, 2024, and March 12th, 2024. So people can get those on the calendar. And I think that will do, except for adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Heather?
Second.
And Wendy, did I hear?
Yes.
Thank you. And unless there's a discussion about it, we'll take a vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Laurie Lee?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And I just want to thank you all for your patience with the difficulties we were having and your help, Bill and Christina. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good evening.